Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Lynette?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Motion carries, six zero. Okay, we've got the tax rating hearing. Is there anything you want to say about that?
Tax rates, post-tax rates, publications in the paper. Based off of what we received from the state auditor's office, the rates remain the same as last year.
Is there any public comment about the tax rates? All right, do I have a motion to set the twenty-five, twenty-six tax rate?
Motion to set the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six tax rate. Second.
Lynette?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion carries, six zero. Katie, do we have any public comments? President's comments, I would just like to welcome all the families, staff, teachers, administrators back to school. Hope you had a somewhat relaxing summer with family and friends. We've had a successful summer with construction and curriculum, which Julie and Dr. Lentz will talk about. And I'd like to thank our administrative staff for forging ahead this summer with all the work that you do and keep striving to do better for our community.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say?
It was a great night out at the midnight skirmish again on Friday night. Mr. Schaefer always does a really good job putting that together. You know, the school year is just about here whenever you stay up all night and watch some softball and football.
Moving on to consent agenda, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Lynette?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion carries, six zero. Does anybody have any questions about any of it, any discussion? All right, approval for bills, do I have a motion for number one?
I'll make a motion to approve ACH zero-one-two-eight-one-five to Monon Seating and Quin for twenty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eight cents, as well as ACH zero-one-two-eight-five-two to Central Bank for fifty-eight thousand thirty-three dollars and seven cents.
Do we have consent with two abstentions? Yeah?
Yes. Do you have a second?
Uh, second.
Lynette?
I abstain.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
I abstain.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Four, zero, two. Motion carries. Do I have a motion for number two?
I'll make a motion of paycheck ACH zero-one-two-seven-nine-one to Amred, Missouri for thirty-one thousand eight sixty-one twenty-five cents, and ACH zero-one-two-seven-nine-seven to Amred, Missouri for fifty-four thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-two cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Lynette?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
I abstain.
Motion carries, five, zero, one. On the reports and presentations, the superintendent's report, Dr. Lentz?
Had a busy month in August for community engagement. All the schools have had their open houses, new teachers were introduced to Quanahs, and this should say J.C.'s, so apologies to the J.C.'s. Athletic teams, social scrimmage, other events. This Friday, I'll provide a program for Rotary facilities. I don't have it in the report, but we do have new swings at Eugene Field. Woo-hoo! Roofing work at high school in Eugene Fields near completion. We've got flashing and final details to put in. Had a lot of opportunities to stress test their work this summer and identify places where it's not keeping the water out. So I think we'll be in pretty good shape once they finish up. On HVAC, all mechanical work, ductwork, they've all been installed at the high school, Eugene Field, and the middle school. Final adjustments to controls are being completed. It was very nice on convocation to be able to get the gym to temperature and the lobby. So, you know, this winter, you won't freeze in the lobby at the athletic complex. Office and entryway renovations at the middle school are near completion. We actually have had the punch list on the office. At the middle school, there'll be a double access control. The second set of doors in the vest wheel will be installed after the start of school. It's not what we're hoping for, but we're having a little difficulty getting the materials on site. Kitchen renovation at the middle school is on pace to be completed before December. The flooring will start going in next week. I've had a meeting today, so that'll be pretty exciting to see that move forward. The addition at the middle school, the framing is starting to go up. Very much on pace to be completed by the end of December, and it'll be enclosed before the cool weather starts. Signing is up on the soccer field tennis court concession stand. We have a couple softball players that are gonna do some damage to the concession stand this year. One of the workers said that one of our softball players tried to kill him a couple times the other day while he was working out there. She kept marking him in the concession stand. That's what Mexico Bulldog softball is all about, sir. Got footings for the tennis court, the water line has been relocated. So that project is on pace. All the playground surface and equipment installation has been completed at McMillan, Eugene Field, and Hawthorne. Want to find me tomorrow, I'm gonna be at McMillan for that first recess to see the kids when they come out. Pretty excited about that. One thing I'd like to work on for our facilities crew, I've been trying to dial into some of their needs. On the south side of the district, we have, it's called the carry-all, it looks like a little golf cart, that helps them spray weeds. On the north side, trying to get by with doing it on the mower, and it doesn't really work well. So I'd like to find quotes for side-by-side on the north side for pruning, spraying weeds, just trying to keep the place looking nice. Finance districts, we have, the last fiscal year closed. Was a deficit budget last year, but we did pull down some federal funds from the prior year that hadn't gotten drawn down. So we did have our fund balance grew by three hundred thousand dollars. If you look at it as a percentage, the operating fund as a percentage dropped because that percentage is calculated by the amount of money you have in reserves divided by your total operating expenditures. So because of our operating expenditures grew last year, even though the cash in the bank grew, percentage is a little bit lower. Provided some financial details with the bond. This was as of after the July board meeting. Tonight was a pretty heavy treasures report on paying some of our bond work. So the total expenditures in this month were quite a bit, but financially, the bond is still on track. Our district has employee assistance, we've had it for a while. And so if there were things that employees needed, they could call and get somebody to talk to. So it's not, this is not like something that's brand-new to Mexico, but we're gonna be able to provide a little different avenue for employee assistance, thanks to Chamber of Commerce. They partnered with C2C and to help get a rap specialist, so that's somebody that can meet with employees if they have a like some sort of, you know, just life gets bumpy sometimes, if you need somebody to talk to. Or they have access to small dollar, like micro loans. So if somebody runs into a bind, they're just trying to keep their lights on. You can buy tires, they don't have to go to a payday lender or something like that. So I think it's a really good thing to offer to our staff, and it didn't come at any cost to the district. So it's a great way to partner with Chamber.
Is there a plan that will be a cost in the future?
I think-
Is that for the first year, or?
I think if we get to a spot where Chamber, C2C can't support it, you know, it's something we could look at, but I think it would all be in the context of what our budget is. So, you know, the the talking point that they have with the rap specialist is that the rap specialist helps save employers' money because you're not spending money onboarding staff. I do think that looks a little different for us than it does maybe in factories and things like that.
It's a great program, we have that true.
Yeah. And it's based off the exact same model, so I think as we look for future budget years, if we feel like it's something to invest in, we sure could. If we're trying to grow our base and put money into salaries.
Was this something that was teachers and that expressed want in the past, or?
No, this is not really something that's been driven like by internal discussions. It's something that, you know, we've got a lot of good partners in the community that wanna come alongside us and help us. And Chamber said, we have an opportunity to do this, what do you think? Never gonna turn down free help, I don't think. Especially with a model that seems like it's working for people.
Like I said, it's a great program, it's a good bridge between different partnerships.
Right.
Resources and all that, they're, I mean, the people that take care of this, they know a lot of people.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, there's lots of things out there to help people in need. Sometimes they don't, the people in need aren't always aware of them. And so the rap specialist can point them to different community resources.
Is Darlene still the rap specialist?
I mean, I hate to talk too much about Darlene on YouTube, but she's kinda like the godfather of the rap specialists, you know? She's a, she's bringing some people, she's got some lieutenants, you know, underneath her that are gonna be out there helping people. So, you know, I think if you get trained up in it by Darlene, it's a, you'll be pointed in the right direction. Yeah, she's, she's been pretty excited about trying, she just likes to help people. Cell phones, you know, with our poor training in July, we didn't really dig into it. The policy from MSBA is out, it doesn't really detail, you know, consequences. The consequences be outlined in the, in the high school handbook. And I pull out the high, point to the high school handbook, because there are other buildings, they have the same policies they've had before. So, we'll go through all of it, but I think it's important to talk about, you know, consequences, consequences are part of, part of how we learn. So I don't think ours is, is as punitive as some other district policies that are sitting out there. But there are ways to try to encourage kids to follow the law. Devices will be confiscated, and parents are gonna be noticed, notified, and a lunch detention. And then second offense, getting that for school detention. Third offense is the same as the second offense, and then, you know, as you get to the fourth offense, you could end up in ISS. But we're not trying to get, not trying to use OSS for this policy. If kids get defiant, they're not gonna turn over their phone. Get to be argumentative with staff, we'll address that through the policies about defiance and disrespect. So this information has been shared via Parents' Square, and I believe the the strategy at the high school is gonna be to, tomorrow's the day of education, but then start leaning into the consequences on the second day, and not try to drag your feet too much longer, even though the law doesn't really go into effect until August twenty-eighth. I feel like the high school staff has been working together to prepare for it. We've got some, some good posters and communication up over there, and I think it'll be a good thing for our kids. I do wanna talk about transportation. We've got a really good staff in the transportation department, but we're, we're really stretching people thin with drivers. We're starting the twenty-five, twenty-six school year with fewer drivers than last year. We'll say it's been retirements and people moving and things like that, just life. One route has been cut, so we're gonna start the year with seventeen routes, nine hundred and thirty-one riders, and twenty-five drivers. That includes substitute U.S. and some trip drivers. Got a lot of routes where kids are gonna have to wait for a minute. The tradition, the tradition here, our practice has been if you live within a mile, we've given the option to pay to ride the bus, it hasn't been a lot, but if you're within a mile, we don't get reimbursed for that ridership, and we're just, the buses are full. We've been wait-listing people that are within a mile, so that's, that's new to parents, it's not what we wanna do. I think it's frustrating for everybody. And we're gonna try to evaluate again once we get a weekend. So, just the danger in trying to shift things around, like the day before school starts is it's three o'clock and kids are just missing, and the drivers haven't had a real chance. I mean, drivers deserve a chance to know who's on their route, where the stops are, and look at it for a couple days. And if everything is changed at the last minute, you end up in a spot where it's difficult to find out, figure out where the kid is. And that's not what any of us want. So there's gonna be some challenges. Particularly, we've got a couple dates on the calendar where we have several athletic teams leaving during route time. Those are gonna be challenging days for us. I say that our back-to-school communication has emphasized the need for drivers and the potential to earn up to fifteen thousand dollars extra in a year driving. And we've got a great training program. It'll be a good thing for you and your kids.
Come on, Marcy.
Is there a-
Talking to the YouTube.
As far as you say we're shorter than last year, is there a cut point at which it becomes critical? Like are we at a hundred and?
Yeah.
You know, where we're like, we can't get kids to and from school?
I would say we're, we're right there.
We're right there?
Yeah, I don't, we're not in a spot like, we have a neighboring district that sends out notifications like as late as six-thirty and says things like, bus fifty-eight isn't gonna run today. You have to get your kids to school. And that's, that puts people in the bind. So we're not, we're not there, but I think we're in a spot where we might have to run a double route of them every once in a while. Or we might have to call teams that we're playing and say, we can't start at five, we're gonna have to start at six because we have to wait till the driver gets back from a route to send our team out.
Do we need to start over this school year, you know, get ahead of the game and start maybe looking at other solutions? Like is there contract solutions? I know other school districts hire out bus solutions, but-
Yeah, my experience with contracted transportation has been they have the same exact-
Problems.
Yeah, but the problem is that the labor pool is small. And if you go to contract buses, the first thing that bus contractor wants you to do is sell all your buses to them.
Well, yeah, I didn't know if you could, if there was a contractual labor portion of it. You know, I'm thinking of manufacturing, you have manpower and all the, you know, other companies around town that would fill in.
The big bus companies will do that for you, but they want you to sell you all their buses. You kinda have to burn all your boats, you know?
Fully commit or not?
Yeah, because then they've got you locked in.
Is there anything we can do about maybe raising bus driver pay?
Yeah, I think, I think we have to look at that. We increased our salaries and I mean, I think at this point, I feel like we owe it to our public to show that we're trying everything we can. We tried to, tried to-
I feel like the-
Drive a bus day, the bus, bus, bus driver roundup day, where we let anybody walk in off the street and get on a bus and drive in the parking lot.
I need a small bus, I can't drive a big bus, too many stop signs.
I will say, you've communicated enough, I thought about it, but time-wise, it doesn't work out.
I think the question that I'd like to answer on, maybe do polls or whatever, because I think our, the target audience is probably should be people who are already school employees. And if we could find out, okay, what's, what is the tipping point that would get you to say, okay, now I'm gonna think about it?
Or the senior center.
I was gonna say retired and-
Yeah, yeah. We are working on a new catchphrase, which basically is, it says, it's not your insurance.
Are you workshop and something on that?
Yeah, I probably need to kick it to Julie here for a second. But yeah, I think, I think it's, it's a challenge for every district in Missouri, and we're no different. Buses are easy to drive, they've got big mirrors, power steering is pretty good.
Brakes.
Power brakes are good, yeah?
They have brakes, yes.
They have brakes, yes.
We support our drivers with discipline issues and training. I feel like there's a big upside to being a part of the student transportation team. It's very rewarding.
Free passes to-
We give T-shirts.
School, dude.
T-shirts.
Free air conditioning.
Yeah, the hospitality room at basketball tournaments is usually really, really good.
Making is the best.
Moving on.
Thanks, Julie.
All right, I'm gonna jump in and talk a little bit about convocation. A couple of years ago, Troy and I came on, we deemed the convocation, it was gonna be the best Mexico convocation ever. We titled it that. And so this year, we were trying to follow up with as much excitement and maybe make it better. I'm not sure if we succeeded or fell short, but Marcy put out an email to the staff with a survey to get some feedback because we wanna do what's best for our teachers and welcoming, and staff, and welcoming them back to the district and have a great start to the year. So we, we met in the high school gym after we had food trucks available for lunch, and we had DJ music outside and picnic-style seating inside and outside, which nobody sat at because it was too hot. But it was there with being in play. Inside joke. So we had games, and Dr. Lentz did a Between the Ferns presentation, or podcast if you will, with a high school student and talked to that student about what kind of impact teachers have made in his life over the years. It was pretty heartwarming, I hope our staff enjoyed it. All right, New Teacher Week, we welcomed twenty-seven new certified staff members to our team in early August. And I wanna give a big shout-out to our instructional coaches, Laura Brunk and Carrie Kniffel for planning that week. They did involve central office directors and administration and building administration. They gave the new teachers plenty of time with their building principals and with their mentors, and they did lots of trainings to help those new teachers know what they needed to know to have a good start at the district. Lots of curriculum work happened over the summer. Getting curriculum for kindergarten through fifth grade is no joke. We had over two hundred and fifty boxes of curriculum materials delivered. Our math team, which included principals and building teacher representatives, worked really hard over the summer, coming into central office many times to help organize that, those, that load of boxes and get them labeled and out to the buildings. And further the work that we're ready to do, to get teachers started on the right track. The lead team had special training from Eureka and talked a lot about how to facilitate year-one implementation and help all of the teachers so that we were all working together on the same page. Sorry, we're losing my voice today. We did trainings on back-to-school PD days with ninety-five percent group, phonics screeners. We had vertical teaming with kindergarten through fifth-grade teachers working together for scope and sequence for their programs. Then we had letters training on back-to-school days. That is for the cohort that started last year, they're in year two now. And we also have about six teachers that have started year one this year. So it's, it's good work and it's gonna make a positive impact. I was just on a webinar meeting today with other curriculum directors and assistant superintendents in our area, and a lot of them were talking about needing to get new math curriculum, and they were talking about needing to get new reading curriculum. And so I was able to share our process, and I think that we have two schools that wanna come and observe ninety-five core phonics. So it's good to be able to showcase that. And I feel like other districts are looking to us as examples, and that feels good. We also, I just wanted to highlight that our instructional coach, Wendy Lentz, for math, put out a need for volunteers to come in and count and organize the counting materials because there were, this entire floor was covered with boxes of counting supplies, part of the curriculum. And it would've taken days and days and days for just a few people to do it. But we had over forty volunteers come in from our community. You ask them, you get, like, it was wonderful. They just kept coming and coming and coming, and we didn't have enough seats for them. So it was wonderful to have such a great turnout. And we got it done in about four hours with all of those people. Yeah, it was amazing. We have great community support, we're very appreciative of it. All right, middle school, I just wanted to give a shout-out to middle school. They're always looking for ways to improve their reading intervention and instruction. I know somebody, I think it might've been John, asked how, how does our reading intervention and the program feed up into the secondary level? So we know that the middle school got that grant, and they've made some purchases for some curriculum supplies. One of them is ninety-five percent group's tier-two model with the phonics learning libraries because, believe it or not, we do have sixth graders coming in who don't have the skills, don't even have awareness, which they needed to have learned in kindergarten first and second grade. So they are backtracking and starting at the basics. They are revamping their model of delivery so that they have a designated time, twenty, twenty-five minutes? Twenty minutes of the very beginning of the day where the whole building is involved in some kind of reading. And that way, they are able to have smaller groups for those kids with specific skill deficits and can focus really in on those skill deficits instead of having twenty-five kids in a group and you have several different areas of need. So that, that model will be fluid with kids moving in and out of groups more easily. And then they'll still have their other time, which you're used to being called corral time, is now called bark time. And that's where they're gonna hone in on some additional reading, but also, you know, front-loading skills and concepts for other classes, especially for math. And they're going to have some life enrichment experiences for kids, just making learning more enjoyable. Like we do for summer school a little bit, but just incorporating that into the regular school day for a middle schooler is important. They're just needing to have those experiences to be able to figure out who they are and what they like to do and what kind of career path they can land in. So I, I think that's gonna be really cool, and I'm glad that the middle school is taking that on. That's all I have, you guys have any questions?
It's very encouraging that we're taking steps to not isolate people who are behind, but use the whole school to
Right.
encourage them to get that and-
Actually was a point on the webinar meeting that I was on, another curriculum director, I think it was Kirksville, said that their model, they were looking to change because they had so many parents opting their kids out of the reading intervention class because those kids were having to miss an elective. And so I was able to share, well, our middle school is doing this, and we've been trying for years to make it happen. I'm really proud of Kyle and Jen for figuring it out.
And yet they would've put an artificial sun in that building so they're not stuck in the shade all the time.
Well, we've been asking for a skylight in the library for years, make it happen.
I remember those days, and the days of fights and darkness, it felt like three years ago.
Well, middle school's kinda that way anyway, but doing it in a windowless building, and it's even more fun.
Anyone else? Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to new business. Do I have a motion to approve the bid reward for diesel and unleaded fuel?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid reward diesel and unleaded fuel for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year to MFA Oil.
Lynette?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, zero. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five C policy updates as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five C policy updates as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five C policy updates as presented.
Second.
Any questions? And everyone's had a chance to read all the policies.
Lynette?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Moving on to the final review of the C SIP strategic plan. Do you have anything you wanna say about it, Dr. Lentz?
Um, it's almost entirely the same as, as the last time you looked at it. On page eleven, I did, uh, based on some feedback and in this room, I did, I did add a goal. It's a little bit general, but I wanted to, to honor the, the need to help kids develop, you know, in terms of behavior and discipline. And it's based off of survey data, smart goal, close of twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, two-year stakeholder satisfaction data from annual climate culture survey. Will exceed the two-year average of the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five school year on items specifically related to behavior and safety. On the, the stakeholder survey that we give to students, parents and teachers that are questions about, about safety and respect. So we'd like to isolate those. You know, the students and staff in Mexico fifty-nine deserve to spend their day in an environment where they feel safe and respected. And I listed some evidence-based strategies. It's mostly things that we do that, that will survey our stakeholders, that will review our handbooks. We'll review our discipline data just to make sure we're being consistent. And, uh, there is an M tip indicator, CC two, that, that this ties to. So the, you know, the state would like to see us honor that as well. So I feel like, um, under C SIP, you're mostly identifying strategies and goals, not necessarily the tactics that are gonna be used. But I think it gives us a place where if administrators and teachers wanna try something new, they can say, well, this, this aligns to something that, that we've noted as a priority. And, uh, could be adopted tonight or we could keep talking about it. I do think the C SIP is something we should always be top of mind and be willing to revise. That's what Bessie wants to see. But it also should be something that's important to us and helping us make the school better for teachers and kids.
As far as the building level handbooks, you know, we had open house last night and. I know you're not given registration and open house, you're not really given a handbook. You go online and look at it generally. Is there, and this may be for the elementary principals, is there a place, you know, this is a question that's come up several times. And I don't know that I know the answer. And since we're saying we're gonna review them here and that. Is there a place for parents to go specifically to review? And, you know, like majors and minors, it's come up several times and sporting and coaching kids in elementary's classes. They wanna know, you know, and that's kinda where I was pushing for this kind of review. Uh, I'm the one who pushed, I know. Um, so if there's a similar, you know, I've tried going to website myself for the last few months. And now that school started, I was looking at what was handed out last night and that. I don't think we have a clear policy or document that explains majors and minors. And I think that's a lot of the sticking points I hear from parents prior to coming on the board and now that I'm on the board.
Right.
So I mean, that may be something we might review quickly or if we can just say publicly where to go to review it.
Well, I was gonna say, you know, at Hawthorne, we, we place in home to parents, like what is a major, what is a minor? I don't know if it's necessarily a document that's on the website, but it's on something that we send home to parents and we communicate to them. Um, through our PBIS, which is the Positive Behavior Sports. Um, I don't know how Eugene feels about that too.
Same. Where you use the parent square and keep the communication up there and how, uh, their behaviors.
I was gonna say, that was gonna be my other suggestion for that. As the school year starts, you get a month in and that's usually, some kid gets in trouble, you know? And, and there gets confusion because you don't remember what registration. I don't know if we need to reiterate and send it back out in parent square. And hey, this is where you go if you have questions or contact so-and-so if you have questions, just to kinda help communicate that.
Are you wanting to know like where, how parents can see majors and where they can see minors or what they are?
Yeah, the general question is every year you, by the time you get to the end of the year, it's why did my kid get a major? Why did my kid get a minor? And, you know, I, I've got a kid who's gotten in trouble. I still don't know today if it was a major or a minor. Um, I just know he's in major trouble in my house.
It depends on who calls you. If it's the teacher who talks to you about it, it's a minor. If it's the principal calls you about it, it's usually a major.
There you go. That, I mean, that's a good, that's a good way for me to explain to people who ask me, so.
I mean, the way I would try to be able to explain people of the minors is something that got taken care of inside the classroom. Maybe they, if they, uh, right, certain, I don't know, you know, whatever, but the teacher corrected the behavior. A major is more of a write-up or a discipline for what we call that the second.
Like I said, I remember us signing something two years ago for it, but I, I was looking for it again this year so I could help educate those who asked me. And I could not find it to save my life, so.
That's great that you got some weekend community experience.
That description right there is probably the best one I've heard and it helps communicate it to anyone who would ask me this year, so. Thank you. Love you.
Do you guys, um, have any more discussion or any comments about the, uh, C SIP?
I thought it was very well put together still.
It's very clear.
Yep.
I agree. I think it's up that we continuously, I change to where, wherever. Adjust.
Supposed to be fluid now.
Yeah.
Keep it a living document, but don't know what we have.
So can we go ahead and make a motion to approve it, the C SIP for twenty-twenty-five?
You're making a motion, John?
Yes.
Second. Lynette?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Thanks for all your work on that, on the academic, or the administrative team. Moving on to personnel, approval of the personnel is listed. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve personnel is listed. Second.
Lynette?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Moving on to number two. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six probationary contracts?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six probationary contracts as presented.
Second. Lynette?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Item number three, approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six five fifty contracts. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six five fifty contracts as presented.
Second.
Lynette?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Moving on to approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six new teacher week contracts. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six new teacher week contracts as presented.
Second.
Lynette?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Moving on to approval of the extra duty contracts. Do I have a motion for twenty-five, twenty-six?
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six extra duty contracts as presented.
Second. Lynette?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Moving on to approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six horizontal level changes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six horizontal level changes as presented.
Second.
Lynette?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. The final item there is informational only for personnel. No action is required. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Lynette?